Regular meeting, okay. We're all set. Good evening and welcome to the May 2nd, 2018 regular meeting of the Garrison Union Free School District Board of Education. As always, our first item on the agenda is the pledge, so if you would join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First official item of business is the public hearing on the budget which the board approved two meetings ago. This is part of a formal process that leads up to the budget vote on May 15.
Seventeen, seventeen to nine.
Seven, seven to nine, yeah. Ms. Hutter will take us through this.
So this is really just a review of the information that we've been going over all budget season. And this is just a chart that shows you where our expenditures are going. A reminder that the budget that we're proposing is $10,908,902. Of that, fifty-six percent of that is going for instruction, twenty percent is for benefits, six percent for general support, six percent on debt service, seven percent transportation, and six percent for operations and management of the district. And this is where the money's going to be coming from. We have reserves and fund balance, other outside sources of interest, refund of prior year's expenditures, miscellaneous donations, state aid, and our tax levy which we're proposing to be $9,094,845 for a total revenue of $10,908,902. And again, you can see that the Garrison taxpayers and Star make up the bulk of our revenue, eighty-three percent. We have a fund balance and reserve that would be eight percent. Interest and miscellaneous revenue would be less than one percent of the total revenue, and eight percent of the revenue is coming from state aid. And this slide here just shows you the actual taxes that Phillips Town and Put Valley have been charged within the Garrison School District and the estimated taxes for this year. For Phillips Town it would be $20.92 and Put Valley $9.80. Over a five-year period, an average out for Phillips Town would be 25 cents per year increase, and for Put Valley that's 14 cents per year. So what does that mean for me as a taxpayer? Tax increase is estimated to be at this point 2.44 percent. So for Phillips Town, you have an average house that's valued about $700,000. We have equalization with Phillips Town, so the amount of that would be $325,500. Where in Put Valley, they're fully assessed, so it would be $700,000. The increase would be estimated to be your house of that size, about $165 for a year. And the vote is on Tuesday, May 15th, in two weeks. We have three board members running up for reelection, Derek Gambler, James Hotch, and Raynae Rock. Please come out to vote.
Ms. Hutter, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well done. And that concludes the public hearing on the budget, and again, it's a element of process that leads up to the vote that Sue just described. And therefore, we should move on to Laura's superintendent's remarks. I don't believe we take questions on a public hearing, do we? No. I don't know. It's not required in Florida.
I think you could ask the questions.
If it were.
Okay, so tell the questions. Yep. I'm happy to answer any questions if somebody has a good point.
And then it's reflected, questions were solicited. All right. Thank you, Sue. Laura?
All right. Good evening, Garrison. I want to send out a congratulations to Howding School District because they have a new superintendent, Dr. Phil Benante. He's from the Arlington School District. And also a shout-out to Dr. Mary Ann Silke. She's the middle school principal, and she just received her doctoral degree from LIU, so lots of things happening in Howding. Phillips Town Garden Club and the Garrison School District would like to invite you to a very special garden dedication to Susan Moss-Hamola. It's the little garden outside the gym area. It's a tribute. She's a lifelong resident of Garrison. We lost her sadly to breast cancer a couple of years ago. Susan led the initial green team for the establishment of the gardens at the Garrison Schools, so please join us on May 10th at 10:00. We will have student gardeners, student leaders, and student musicians in attendance along with community members and the Hamola family members as well. The next board meeting, just clarifying, dates is June 6th at 7:00. The Audit Finance Committee is also on June 6th. Finance Committee is at 5:30, and the Audit Committee is at 6:00. And the Facilities Meeting is May 10th at 11:00 a.m. We have just saying that publicly because we've been going back and forth and trying to get dates, so.
That's the same date as the Hamola.
Correct.
Yeah, one precedes the other. If Hamola proceeds, then Facilities.
What time is that, May 10th, Facility?
11:00 a.m. So Board meeting June 6th, Audit Finance Committee June 6th, Facilities Committee meeting May 10th at 11:00. And I just want to send out a shout-out to the K Team. They had kindergarten orientation today. That's Melissa, Stacy, Nurse Melissa, Stacy, Jeanne, and Jessica. They were a dynamic team. They talked about the typical day, kindergarten, academic and play centers, tips for preparing children for kindergarten, fifth grade buddies, and field trips. Lots of good things happening in kindergarten. And right now, we have seventeen students enrolled. So there are about twenty excited parents and guardians there learning all about what to expect when their young child walks in on their first day at school and spends their first day with us. It was a nice morning. And lastly, I just wanted to go back to what John started to talk about. Last time we met around about a grade-two class, which is right now at twenty-six students. We may be getting a couple more, we're not sure. There was an inquiry. But based on the increase in size recently and the increase in needs and support, we are recommending splitting the classes into two sections. We will come back to the board with recommendations. We know this puts pressure on the budget, so we're, as a team, we're going to sort of look at the grade and how it impacts the school personnel, our program, as well as our budget, and we'll come back with some ideas of how to alleviate the pressure that this new addition of teachers brings. Not the teacher, but the person with the salary. And that's all I have.
Great. Thank you. Questions for Laura? Comments?
John, principal's remarks.
Good evening, board. Good evening, community. As we know, there are a plethora of abbreviations and acronyms that permeate our society, and education has no shortage of them, and there are four letters to which I'd like to introduce all of you this evening. Those letters are intrinsically tied to one of our district priorities, that of social-emotional learning. Social-emotional learning was wisely made one of our district priorities last year, knowing that if a student does not feel safe, and does not feel valued, and does not feel happy, that they're going to be short-changed with their potential for learning. So social-emotional learning goes far to make sure that we are addressing those foundational needs that people have in order to open up their personalities to be their best learners. So there is a program that has gotten a lot of attention throughout school districts across our nation called PBIS. PBIS is short for Positive Behavioral Intervention Supports. It is a multi-tiered approach to social-emotional and behavior support within schools, and it is something that our social-emotional team identified last year as a way into social-emotional supports that we would be interested in pursuing. We applied it to a program. We didn't anticipate it would be a rigorous application process to be approved by an offering by RSE Task. That stands for the Regional Special Education Technical Assistance Support Center that works out of our Putnam, Northern Westchester Bowsies. After interviews and inquiries as to our motives and why we are interested in this learning, a team of professionals from this building was approved to participate in a year-long training in PBIS. That was under the leadership of Matthew Evans, who was our team leader, and included Mike Williams, Marjorie Giuliano, Debbie Earl, and myself. Basically, the thrust of this multi-day training really was what would positive behavioral interventions look like here in Garrison? What are the behaviors in students that we would want to encourage? What do they look like within our building? How would they be taught? How would they be reinforced? How would they be celebrated? How would we assess the effectiveness of these interventions? And how do we support those students who are struggling with behaviors so that we encourage everybody to be able to have those feelings of being safe, being valued, and being happy within our schools so we can open those doors to learning? So that work has been excited. It has been teamwork that we are ready to really, right now, start to unfold to the faculty, share with the community, share with the board. It will be some of the foundational learning we will be engaged in for Professional Learning Day on May 25th, and it will be something that we will, in the new school year, in our August training days, really thinking about how to kick off the 18-19 school year with a very, very visible and explicit new component to our approach to education that includes how to teach kids behavior. Just to share with you a little bit of celebration, the work that we've done under RSE Task, under one of their behavior specialists, Dale Langley, was so recognized within our region, I would say there were probably about a dozen different districts that were participating in this initiative, PBIS initiative. We were selected amongst all of those participants regionally to present the work we've done so far in a conference that will be called the Student Outcomes Conference, SOCON, in Terreton on June 7th, where 250 members of our region will basically be getting together to share best practices, and we will be sharing the successes we have found in launching PBIS at Garrison at that time.
Sure. Other, before we go, questions, other things to report on, or?
That's it.
That's it. This is substantial report. Questions for John?
Questions?
Just one. You listed a long list of rhetorical questions that were explored during this development process. In summary, given the way we, I'm standing, the way we handle these kinds of challenges now, just describe for us how we're going to handle them differently faced with the same challenge next September. What's going to change?
I would say, in many ways, a simplification of expectations. Basically, as we look at PBIS, we found some umbrellas of behaviors that seem to, we all read upon, fit into our culture, and fitted within the framework. That is, students being safe, being responsible, and being respectful. And the idea is that we teach those three attributes through lessons, but we also take a look at all of our different learning environments and think about how it is to be safe, to be respectful, and responsible in a classroom, in a hallway, in a gymnasium, on the playground, on a bus, so that we're basically teaching these core attributes, behaviors, and then making it very, very clear as to what the expectation is, as how those manifest themselves throughout the area, post-it, really make it a very, very visible reminder, and then have very, very clear ways that we are celebrating success. We're talking about a reward system, both extrinsic and intrinsic, and also having a very, very clear outcomes as how we support kids when they slip up, because we all live on human skin, and we will slip up, and what are the supports that we have in place to support a child as they slip.
Well, good luck with it.
Thank you.
Well, it reads a common language, too, right? A common language and understanding across all of the grades. Every time a student goes to another grade or a teacher sees somebody in the hallway, we're all speaking that same language of expectations, right? So it's nothing new.
Expectations of behaviors.
Yes.
And expectations about how deviations from that expected behavior are going to be addressed.
That's correct.
So two levels of expectation for the faculty. Okay.
It sounds like this matters in there also.
Clearly, yes.
And just on that, John and I are planning to present an update around our district priorities during our June 6th meeting.
Good. Is there no more questions for John? We have just a few items on the consent agenda. Can we go to the?
We have a budget transfer.
Oh, we got a budget transfer. Oh, sorry. Before we get to any of that, Sue's back on. Never mind. Sue, treasurer's report.
Treasurer's report. First page is the multi-fund account. We started out the month of March, $695,847.53. We had an income of $873,699.59. $604 of that was from our investment accounts, and $265 of that were from the state and federal We had expenses of about $923, so we ended out the month at $646,204.62 on multi-funds. On the investment accounts, we started out March with $8,161,379.41. We had an interest income of $1,0965.39, and on the bottom, you see the transfer for the $604 that went into the multi-fund, so we ended off the month at $7,559,344.2.
Questions for Sue? That was a very straightforward answer. In that case, I'm going to ask for a resolution that we approve the resolved Board of Education Garrison Union Free School District accepts the treasurer's report from March 2018 as presented.
So moved.
Anybody want a second there?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. No abstentions, no names. Thank you, Sue. Do you want to take us through budget status from the board reports?
Revenue status, I mean, the individual reports. I mean, you can see pretty much our revenue is all in at this point. We're not expecting too much more for the rest of the year. And our budget status and warrants are pretty much business as usual, so unless you have any specific questions on that, I can go right into the budget transfer.
Two hundred, yeah, two twenty, $22,500.
$22,500. The main part of that is the one code there for teacher salary alloy that's, this is the time of year the teachers are putting in for professional development. We're just spending a lot in that area this year. And then there's other miscellaneous things popping up.
Okay, this is the incremental column.
Yeah, I mean.
Doing future development, professional development.
Professional development that the teachers get paid for.
Okay.
They put in for this time of year. A little bit more this year.
Any questions for Sue on that budget transfer?
No.
If not, resolved Board of Education, Garrison Union Free School District approves budget transfer number six in the amount of $22,500.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
No abstentions, no names. Now, we get to the consent agenda, which has very few items. Resolved Board of Education, Garrison Union Free School District approves the consent agenda's items B through D as presented. That's not it. First is the minutes of the April 24, 2018 regular board meeting. Second are CSE recommendations, those are also in your package, and my favorite, approve the eighth-grade trip itinerary, approve the itinerary for the eighth-grade trip to Boston, May 10 and 11, 2018. I need a so moved. I'll take a second, and then Laura can tell us what's going on in Boston.
Boston.
Where are we, what's going on in Boston? Are we doing whale watching?
Well, John's going, so.
John?
John, Kathy Clark, and Sue McEnroe are going.
I heard there's events that preceded me with whale watching.
Never to be done again.
A repeat trip on the seas.
Yeah.
But you'll be on the duck tour.
We do do a duck tour.
That's much different.
The waters are relatively calm and then back to the house.
I love that duck tour.
Duck tour is great. All right. Anything you want to add to it?
It's a fun trip. You know, it's a fine mixture of fun and educational opportunities. It's a great way to really, really celebrate the eighth-grade year and, you know, everything that's coming to, and it really sort of kicks off that graduation season, and it's a wonderful celebratory time. I'm looking forward to it.
Excellent. Okay. Is there no more, any questions for, for either Laura or John, on any items in the consent agenda? No? All those in favor?
Aye.
No abstentions, no names. We have two action items.
Do it.
The first is the approval of the Westchester Putnam School Boards Association Slate of Officers and Directors and the ratification of their budget. Resolution reads, "Resolved Board of Education, Garrison Union Free School District Cast A," and we will fill this in. We can vote yes or no. Vote for the Westchester Putnam School Boards Association Slate of Officers and Directors and a yes or no vote for ratification of the 2018 and 19 budget. Both the slate of officers and the budget are in your package. I will only observe that we appreciate immensely the additional time. Each of the board members are also members of the respective school boards throughout Western, Westchester and Putnam counties, so they put in, whatever time they put in with their own boards, they devote additional time to the Westchester Putnam School Boards Association, and they are to be thanked and appreciated for that. The budget we're asked to approve is $266,000 in your package. It shows an increase on a budget of about $266,000, of about $3,000 a year over year, well within, it's a very responsible budget, well managed.
$266,000.
All right. So if there are no questions on that, I'm going to, I wouldn't ask that we vote.
I just have one question. No opposition, but just, how did they get nominated? Like, it always appears before.
Yeah, they self-nominate, I suppose. I'm sure they, they basically self-nominate. And if any one of, having said that, if any one of us, next year, would want to, wants to run? Do they?
Not me, James.
We would, we will. So all those in favor of approving both the slate of nominees and the budget, say aye.
Aye.
No abstentions, no names. Sue, we didn't have to vote twice.
You don't have to.
We don't have to vote?
You tell me what, you voted for each one, but you didn't, I didn't get a second on that.
Oh, we didn't, it was a second.
Second.
Oh, second.
And I.
Second, Sue got that. Very good. Now.
Big one here.
Yeah. Drum roll. Can we have a drum roll, please? Acceptance of donation of playground equipment. Resolved Board of Education, Garrison Union Free School District accepts the donation of playground equipment from the Garrison Children's Education Fund. This is drafted, thank you, so moved. This is drafted in rather clinical legalese. If I were redrafting, I would say, accepts with deep appreciation, the donation. But we have a, we have a second, we have a so moved, we have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
No abstentions, no names. Can I just ask for an update, Lisa, or anybody? Are we, what's our, what's our schedule? Are we?
Yes.
Are we taking, do we know a date for delivery in this place?
Well, we, there are a couple things. One thing, we were waiting. I'm sorry.
Thank you, Lisa.
Hi. Please don't interrupt.
That's some public.
No, I know, that's all right.
We're in the public meeting now. The founder doing this anyway.
I learned the little one.
No, we're deiating ever so slightly.
Okay. I am Lisa Rasek. I'm the president of the Garrison Children's Education Fund, and in regards to schedule, we were waiting for an actual acceptance by the board in order to be able to initiate the order. So we have put down our deposit, we do have our funds in place, so we are quite confident that we are going to have this playground this summer.
And vendors said, yeah, we can give us the go-ahead.
Yes. Oh, absolutely. In fact, they reached, as a good vendor should.
Yeah.
They have already reached out to us to ask if we were, the actual date that we had originally scheduled to place our order, I think, was two days ago. So we're pretty in line with our schedule.
And the property group already, excavation and mulch is all in place.
Oh, so we're done?
Already done that yet?
Oh, good.
Like planned, ready timeline.
What's the worst decision?
That's a big decision, excavation. And I think Michael Tardy is planning on the end of June to get that ready. Great. Need to go for installation.
So can I take this time to thank you for accepting the proposal?
Thank you.
And of course, thank you to the administration, to Laura, to John, to Sue, to Mike, and they, you all have made this happen very exceedingly.
Yes.
And we're quite grateful for that. And then, of course, thank you to our donors. We continue to solicit and hope that we might be able to add to this, or at least decrease the dipping into our reserves as we have pledged. But in any case, we're safe and we are quite happy.
We're going to create a big occasion when it's all in, there's going to be an event.
Very sure.
Excellent.
And with Derek, though, what came, what was the decision on the final killer stuff?
There was a whole discussion about wood and lumber.
Oh, well, I don't.
That's our thing, so Lisa doesn't necessarily have to know that.
Right. That's not, I think that Sarah, Sarah's really deep into the mulch, but it's not rubberized mulch. I'm quite sure. It actually needs to be something that is going to be composed over time, but it's also affordable. If I'm stepping on your toes. It's affordable, but it's not going to live there in our environment any longer than it should.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Lisa. So, actually, so we, the next item is public comment, so you actually had a public comment there. If there's any other public, any other public comment? Are you back up? Okay, good.
Um, not related to the playground, actually. I was really happy to hear about the PBIS initiative. I feel like I've seen some of the action work in this, and I have to commend, again, John and teachers and staff for making this, making our classrooms even more inclusive and happier and safer and a place where respect is enjoyed. I have a question, though, about whether there will be outreach to parents generally so that we have a shared understanding for how transgressions or will be addressed.
Transgressions.
At the students.
Okay.
You know, when they are found to be perhaps not exhibiting respectful or responsible or, sorry, safe behavior.
Good question.
Will this, that's a question, by the way.
Will the section of the faculty handbook be, or I'm sorry, the, well, the section of the employee handbook and the student handbook align with this?
Yes. So is, there is right now a procedure outlining the Code of Conduct. As we, as we work through PBIS, we will have to reconcile where that approach deviates from the Code of Conduct and obviously then revisit documents so that everything we do is unilateral and clear and articulated well across all of our documents. So that's going to be part of the work.
Lisa, you had a question there, right? Is there going to be outreach to parents so that there is a shared understanding and expectation of what this new approach is going to involve? I assume the answer is yes, but maybe you want to, either of you can elaborate on that.
Yes, of course.
So yes, the answer is yes, of course. There is a lot of work that we first do at the faculty level, so when I was introducing the topic, what I did say was that there is much foundational work and articulation that has to be done at faculty level. Right now, the work has been done within a team of five. The next step will be to really bring that work and have it unfold at a faculty level, and then once that work is complete, we will be ready then to obviously really do a full communications campaign out to the parents.
Is that, is that, is that work done at the faculty level intended to get teachers and aides all on board with the language and approaches and atmospheres that create, that allow people, I forget the acronym already, PBIS to flourish? In other words, is there, there's a pedagogical aspect to what's going on, right?
Yes.
You can tell a student to behave in such, such way, but there are ways you're supposed to communicate that so that they're encouraged to behave in expedible, expedient.
That's correct. And that is a lot of the learning through which we engage. One of the, like, one of the simple tenants of PBIS is something called a four-to-one ratio in teacher language, where for every one negative correction, you should be skating four positives. So it are those kinds of, when you're talking pedagogical, if that's, but that's, it's very highly impactful. very highly impactful. So if you think of all the adults in the building are thinking about, for every one time they're saying they're doing the wag the dog, and don't you do that, for every one time they're doing that, there are four times saying, nice job. That's what we're supposed to be doing. That in itself starts to create a different learning culture. And those are the, that's one small example of the type of things we'll be engaging with at the faculty.
Would you prescribe the same kind of remediation for board communication as well?
I will leave that for board discussion.
Let that one hang out.
I think that might be agenda number nine on the, for you guys.
Is there, our last item on, well, this is board member comment. Do we have any board member comment? If not, I have one. And I have to recognize Ms. Sue Tudor, who's sat patiently.
Thank you.
Ms. Tudor is here because as part of the required process for the public hearing on the budget, interested voters, interested members of the community who are not registered to vote would have the opportunity to register here tonight. And that's why Ms. Tudor is here.
Oh.
So that's why. So thank you, Sue, and thank you for all of the work you're going to be doing on May 15? 15.
I have one comment, actually. Sorry. We, we, you know, this, the emergence of the need to hire a new teacher and retirements and whatnot always provide an opportunity to engage in how we handle the, it gives us the opportunity to figure out how we want to make changes for the future, kinds of hires we'd like to encourage, et cetera. I'm sure that we're not there yet. Right? So, you know, one way to think about this is, I hope, I want to encourage, is to think about proposals or different models or what would work. And that, it might be, it might help us understand why this is an effective use of the resources that we are to approve as well as the lines that we're supposed to approve. So if we're going to go about shifting the budget upwards, and this is indeed a need, the question is, how do we address that need? And I'm sure there's multiple ways to go about doing that. And it would be good to have a sense of those models so that we can make judicious decisions and not vote on one model.
Any other comments? I'm going to suggest we, with the consent of word, we amend the agenda tonight to add an executive session. So we have two votes right now, back to back. One is, we vote to amend the agenda, and then we'll adjourn to executive session. So resolve the Board of Education, Garrison Union Free School District amends the agenda of its May 2nd, 2018 regular meeting to include an executive session.
Some moved.
Need a second. Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. No abstentions, no nays. All right. Next vote is resolve the Board of Education, Garrison Union Free School District adjourns to executive session to discuss collective bargaining.
Some moved.
Anybody want a second? Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
No abstentions, no nays. Thank you all very much.
You guys got the lucky ones.
I'm with this one.